Good evening and welcome to this special meeting of the Pittsburgh City Council for the purpose of appointing a councillor to the open seat. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. One member of the public has registered for the meeting, a Ms. Maria Padilla Aquendo. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. If Ms. Aquendo is here, I would ask that she briefly indicate what she's registered for, but there is not actually a public comment for this meeting. Ms. Aquendo? I see you in the corner there. You're muted.
Yep, I'm here.
Yes, I what did you, was there a purpose that you registered for tonight, or did you just want to sit in and watch?
I just wanted to sit and watch.
Okay, in that case, welcome and enjoy. I am going to keep you muted just because there may be background noises or whatever, but welcome and I hope you find it informative and entertaining. I am also just noting, I see that all candidates are currently muted. I'm just going to note that I will be keeping you all muted except when it's your turn to talk. Nothing personal, just making sure that we have everything in good order. One moment, there we go, now everyone is. Okay, so councillor Green, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Madam Clerk, you are muted.
My apologies. The following councillors have logged in and are present at tonight's meeting. President Sorella, councillor Bushman, councillor Kuchar, councillor Dina Tally, councillor Fleming, councillor Green, councillor Schultz, councillor Squalia, councillor Van Hazinga and councillor Walsh.
Thank you. I will now read the warrant for this special meeting dated January 11th, 2021. Warrant for a special meeting of the city council Tuesday, February 16th, 2021, immediately following the regular city council meeting, which is scheduled to begin at 7:00 PM. This meeting will take place via the Zoom meeting platform. Register in advance for the public comment portion of the agenda by going to insert link here. The agenda will consist of naming a replacement to fill the vacancy in the office of Pittsburgh City Councillor-at-Large due to the resignation of newly-elected state representative Michael Kusmerick. The following will be the order of business for this meeting. Call to order, pledge of allegiance, roll call attendance, reading of the warrant, reading of the names of the candidates, a lottery for the order of presentation by the candidates, presentations by the candidates of three minutes each, roll call vote to elect, actually that is slightly incorrect. There will be a ranked choice vote to elect the councillor-at-large, followed by a roll call vote to confirm the result. The clerk will announce the newly-elected councillor-at-large and then swear in the newly-elected councillor-at-large. I trust all councillors have had the opportunity to read the rules for this meeting. If there are any questions or clarifications regarding those rules, I would ask that you raise them now rather than while we are attempting to execute them. Seeing none, madam clerk, please read the names of the candidates and conduct the lottery. This will be accomplished via a random generator and shared on the screen via the clerk's computer.
Thank you, President Sorella. I will now attempt to share my screen. I ask all of you for your patience. Can everyone see my screen?
Only, yes, yes.
I will now read the list of candidates. Mark M. Ambrose, Zachary Boss, Michael A. Crusciter, Derek J. Cruz, Thomas Hughes, Muna V. Kangson, Amanda E. Loft, Farqan K. Mahmood and Kevin D. Roy, with my apologies for anyone's name I did not pronounce correctly. I now have a random generator that I will put the names in just for the sake of expediency. And this will be the order that they will appear. Amanda Loft, Farqan Mahmood, Mark Ambrose, Derek Cruz, Michael Crusciter, Muna Kangson, Kevin Roy, Zachary Boss and Thomas Hughes. So Ms. Loft, you are first to make your presentation. You do have three minutes.
And I will note for all candidates, the three minutes is a limit, but it is a soft limit. You don't need to worry that I'm going to mute you as soon as you hit three minutes and one second, but I will ask you to begin wrapping up if you have not already. You may proceed, Ms. Loft.
Okay, everybody can hear me good?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening. It's my pleasure meeting with you all virtually during such challenging times. I appreciate the time and consideration for my candidacy for the council position. I'd like to take a few moments and to tell you about myself. My name is Amanda Loft and I come before you as a proud member of the city of Pittsburgh. My family has actually lived in Pittsburgh for four generations. I am a single mom of a beautiful little girl named Charlotte who attends Memorial Middle School. She alongside with friends and family have been so supportive and encouraging during this process in preparing for tonight. I've worked in the human service industry for over 20 years and currently work as a quality management consultant for a nonprofit agency. In my personal time, I have proudly partnered with an amazing local organization called Help for Our Community. In an effort to live up to their motto, be the change, my family and I helped prepare and distribute hot meals during the holidays and then assisted in organizing the collection and distribution of necessities such as clothing and toiletries for the numerous families that were displaced back when, 2019, during the Bartley-Nolan condo fire. On weekends in the fall and spring, you'd find me cheering very loudly, might I add, from the stands at the Pittsburgh street hockey rinks and in the winter, supporting the local PAL basketball team. I am what you would call or consider an average citizen of Pittsburgh. I'm an average citizen that truly cares about the growth, development and future of our city. Many of the skills that I use in my line of work would be useful in my role as a council member. I'm trained to look at the big picture in addition to the immediate matter at hand. I'm a believer in being proactive instead of reactive. If we're seeing trends or themes in a certain area that might require more attention, it's our job to come up with an action plan and communicate it to the residents in a manner that's clear, inclusive and everybody can understand. I pride myself on the ability to be able to walk into a room or a meeting with an open mind, looking at facts, evidence and any outside varying factors. I won't stop there. I will continue to come up with creative options to remedy the problem for city council to consider and then in an effort to grow and foster progress across the city. I strongly believe Pittsburgh is on a positive path, which inspired me to be part of leading the city. City council members play a serious vital role. A lot of the decisions that we make or you make have a direct bearing on the members of this diverse community. That's a huge commitment to make and not one that I would take lightly. I have seen firsthand the impact that those decisions can have on individuals, families. And I assure you and all of my neighbors in Pittsburgh that while I may be an average citizen, I would listen to everyone, advocate and make decisions based on the best interest of the community as a whole. Thank you so much for your time this evening and this wonderful opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Loft. Mahmood, it is your turn to speak.
Good evening, everybody. You can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Farqan Mahmood. I was born in Pittsburgh, 1982. I got three kids, 16. My daughter just turned five and I have a son that's going to turn two in April. I know all you guys had read my letter of interest and resume, so I took a little bit twist. I have a passion for poetry, so that's how I'm going to proceed. Councillors, candidates, mayor and all tuned in, gracious for an opportunity, here I begin. To speak is a right that I reserve, an opportunity presented to serve. An empty seat is in the air as it will descend, waiting to be filled by a vote at night's end. Born in Pittsburgh and witnessing the ups and downs, attending school K through 12 and taking in the city's sounds. I will listen to the community and everyone's concern, embrace them and expect nothing in return. Being honest and forthcoming is what I bring to this city. The plan to encourage equality and increase diversity, bridging gaps and joining hands for one cause, concentrating on what's now and not what was. Cleaning up the image of my home is a top of my list, something that we should not overlook, rather assist. I will look at myself before I look at you. I plan to lead by example and follow through. At the end of the day, it's the city of the people, not I, but we. Facts is what they look for and change is what they want to see. We have grown as a city but still have room to advance. Thank you for your time and will be honored to have a chance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ambrose. It is your turn.
Good evening to all city council members. I am Mark Ambrose, a lifetime resident of Pittsburgh for the past 69 years. I decided to become a candidate for council-at-large due to the present council's active transformation of Pittsburgh. On February 3rd, Mayor Dina Tally's positive message gave specific plans for action. A positive movement is underway and the horizon looks bright. My resume shows my involvement in Pittsburgh's history as a teacher, a coach and a class advisor. In 1975, I became the first head coach of Pittsburgh girls cross-country team. My coaching philosophy was to instill in all of our athletes that through focused hard work, success would follow, confidence would greatly increase and I was their biggest fan. In 1989, our team won the league title, the district title and the Division One Girls State Championship. I was also twice inducted into the Pittsburgh High School Hall of Fame. Once for our state championship team, the other for my coaching success over 33 years as cross-country coach and 16 years as indoor and outdoor track coach. Also, I was a member of the committee to rededicate Cogswell Park in 1992. In addition, it was my idea to start the Slattery's Turkey Trot. For 38 years, this race brought thousands of runners and walkers to Pittsburgh from over 70 communities. The proceeds from our race were invested in student athletes from six area high schools. Turkey Trot scholarships totaled $240,000. Certainly, the race is a proud landmark of Pittsburgh's history. Finally, I inherited my love for Pittsburgh through my father, Francis Ambrose. In 1975, he bought a condemned house just over the Fifth Street Bridge and had it moved to his land outside of St. Bernard Cemetery. The transformation of this house mirrors today's movement to rebuild buildings and neighborhoods, resulting in increased pride in the city by the river. Pittsburgh, a city I love. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, you are muted. Still muted. All right, we'll give the city clerk a few moments to resolve any technical difficulties, but in the meantime, next on the list is Mr. Cruz.
Evening councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for considering me. I'm sure I know what some of you are probably thinking, who is this? And that's all right, I don't blame you. This is my first political speech, so it probably seems like I'm coming out of nowhere. And in some ways, you're right, but I come from Pittsburgh, born and raised. And I've always had the desire to serve my community, but it wasn't until this past year that the call to serve became too loud to ignore. As we know, 2020 was a year unlike any other. It was a year defined by a disturbing pandemic, near unprecedented division and at times an alarming sense of hopelessness. And as I looked around, I saw a whole lot of people pointing the finger. Not just placing blame, but asking what others were going to do, asking, what are you going to do, senator? What are you going to do, teacher? What are you going to do, police officer? And I decided the only way to fight this sense of hopelessness that I was feeling was to stop looking around and ask myself, what am I going to do? And how can I make the world a better place? That might sound bombastic to some, making the world a better place. But making the world better doesn't mean you change the whole world overnight. It means you make it better for those around you. And I'd like to start doing so here in Pittsburgh on the council. I'm inexperienced, there's no way around that, but that doesn't mean I'm a stranger to Pittsburgh or the agenda the council has for it. Whether it be shaping Pittsburgh's cultural identity or developing infrastructure downtown, rest assured, I'm with you. And I'm ready to put in the work it will take from all of us to achieve our common goal, to make our worlds, Pittsburgh, a better place. This wouldn't be my first time in a leadership position either. I led cast and crews on film sets in Los Angeles for several years as an assistant director. This is the central leadership position on set responsible for coordinating departments, managing the budget and sometimes just keeping the peace. And I had a knack for it, with skills I think would serve the council well. And I'm no stranger to government. I understand it's not just right and left. Like many Americans, I lie somewhere in the middle. I'm liberal on social issues, but fiscally I understand the value to a conservative approach. And I think that's something that I have to offer to the council. Understanding that it's not right and left or black and white, despite what the media might tell you, it's far more complex, especially at the local level. And government is about making the best decisions that are right for the city, even when it's hard, something I'm prepared to do. Part of that preparation admittedly has been education from Barnes and Noble and I'd like to quote one of the great minds that I learned about and from during this education, John F. Kennedy. He said, "Let us not despair, but act. Let us not seek the Republican answer or the Democratic answer, but the right answer. Let us not seek to fix the blame for the past, but accept our own responsibility for the future." To that, councillors, I say, I accept. I accept the responsibility to take action because only through action can hopelessness be defeated. I can no wonder wake up in the morning and point the finger knowing I have the ability, the will and the resolve to do more, to make a difference, to act and to lead. Having said that, councillors, whether appointed or elected, it will be my honor to serve Pittsburgh. Either way, I'll see you in November. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for the little blip we had there. Mr. Crusciter, it's your turn to speak.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
We can.
Awesome. Good evening. My name is Michael Crusciter. Originally purchased a home in the city of Pittsburgh, which sparked my interest to run for city council. I feel the potential the city has, thus I decided to lay my roots here. Most importantly, I want to contribute to the future endeavors to help improve the city. I'm interested in improving the city not only for the residents but for the businesses of Pittsburgh as well. I received my master's in electrical engineering from UMass Lowell. I received my undergraduate degree in electrical engineering with a minor in business from UMass Lowell as well. I'm currently employed at an engineering company where I'm an electrical engineer that concentrates mainly on the radio frequency technologies. In my current role, my main responsibilities include leading small teams, designing hardware, reviewing and providing advice for various efforts. Throughout my career, I have worked closely with government agencies. In my experience working with these agencies, even the simplest tasks can be tough to accomplish. This has taught me to come up with simple solutions to complex problems. It has also taught me to push actions, tasks and projects to closure, especially quickly. Improving my community and finding a way to make a difference has always been a passion of mine. In my youth, I was a boy scout where I achieved the highest rank of Eagle Scout. During this time in the Boy Scouts, I did various volunteering efforts for the community. I received notoriety for my Eagle Scout project during a brief spread in the local newspaper. This project consisted of replacing craft, broken and damaged military markers in cemetery throw lemons. This project not only included the physical work of finding and replacing the markers, working with the local municipal veterans association and the veterans association at the federal government level to replace these markers and get the new markers shipped. If you select me for the city councillor-at-large position, I will use my creative background to work with my fellow councillors to ask the tough questions to help give the residents and businesses of Pittsburgh a voice. Pittsburgh has come so far from where it used to be with the efforts of the brand-new city hall building, the future revitalization efforts in the planning process for Main Street. I look forward to working with you and working with the residents and businesses of Pittsburgh to keep Pittsburgh on this great path forward. I want to thank you for giving me the time to consider me for the city council-at-large position for the city of Pittsburgh. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next applicant is Mr. Kangson. Your turn, please. You have to unmute, sir.
I am sorry about that. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the city council, fellow applicants to the councillor-at-large seat. My name is Muna Kangson. I live at 98 Preacher Street. It is my honor to present my candidacy for the vacant at-large seat to you today. Before I do so, however, I would like to acknowledge you and your service to our community. Having worked for many political campaigns before, I know that the rigors of an election, door knocking, fundraising, visibility create a challenge for the family, not just for you but also for your family. I'm also aware of the occasional city council meeting that goes beyond midnight, depriving you sometimes of the privileges of sharing dinner with your loved ones. So thank you for your service. I also want to acknowledge the employees of the city of Pittsburgh who continue to provide services during the public health crisis at great risk to their safety and their families. So thank you as well for that service. I graduated from the University of Massachusetts, Boston in 2008, where I received the John F. Kennedy Award, the highest award bestowed on an undergraduate student. I went to work for the mayor of Cambridge right out of college and since then, I have held several positions with growing managerial responsibilities in Cambridge, in the Cambridge Municipal Government, a testament of the confidence that Cambridge city leaders have in me. I moved to Pittsburgh in 2015 and would like to leverage my experience in government to work with you in realizing the promise of a better future for our community. If I am selected, I will use my experience as a director of constituent services to immediately begin to address constituent needs which have been exacerbated by the public health crisis. I will use my communications, my experience in communications and outreach to engage the voice of city residents about the challenges facing our city and use various channels of communication to amplify their concerns and keep them engaged in the conversation. Policymaking is about translating ideas into a vision and a vision into legislative action. At the nucleus of the policymaking process is the welfare of the community as a shared goal. It is a goal which I believe inspired many of you to seek elected office. To this extent, policymaking is also about building partnerships, forging alliances and creating coalitions to achieve shared objectives. If selected, I will leverage this experience to work with you to address the challenges facing the city, challenges that you councillors have made substantial efforts in addressing. Pittsburgh is at the cusp of achieving many of the things that city leaders and residents have dreamed of for a long time. This is the time to safeguard against the kind of dislocation spurred by economic development which leaves out the most vulnerable members of our community and leads to apathy and disillusionment. For instance, now is the time for us to invest in our affordable housing stock to prepare for the time when property values will increase, making it more difficult for residents who weather difficult economic times in the city to continue to afford to live here.
Excuse me, Mr. Kangson. If you could please wrap up, you're reaching your three minutes.
This will threaten the loss of diversity in our community and may need to lead to negative outcomes. If selected, I will rely on your mentorship and leadership to learn about how the process works in Pittsburgh and how best to work within this process to achieve results for our constituents and our community. Thank you.
Sir, we have Mr. Roy, please, next.
What did they say? Yeah, we couldn't hear that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Roy, it's your turn to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Councillors, it's great to be back before the city council once again. I told councillor Walsh earlier today, I've sat before the council and addressed the council hundreds of times, but this is the first time in the Zoom setting, so it's very interesting. I would also like to take one minute to thank councillor Kusmerick, who I had the opportunity to work with on many occasions and I'm sure he's going to represent us well on Beacon Hill. I would also like to, it's encouraging to see eight other candidates, obviously from what we've heard so far tonight, very good candidates that have an interest in the city of what in what direction we're going. I know all you councillors have gotten my cover letter and my resume, but for the FATV audience out there, just a quick rundown, I'm a lifelong resident of Pittsburgh. I have a rather a large family here that have been involved in a number of civic events in the city. I'm a product of Pittsburgh's school system. My three children are products of that system and I currently have two grandchildren at McKay School. Myself and my wife have organized and run many youth sport leagues in the city over the years. I've served on many civic boards, agencies, committees as part of my civic duty. I've worked in the private and public sector and I have a vast knowledge of all city departments, how they operate and how the city operating budget functions. Basically, I've worked for the city, the people of Pittsburgh for over 50 years, dating back to my high school days, working jobs with the city. I've also worked with, I think it's either 10 or 11 mayors and dozens of city councillors and always had a good professional relationship with all those people. I have always loved the city of Pittsburgh and the people that reside here. My particular interest is in recent months, I was working on many projects through the redevelopment advisory board, the NICE committee, the mayor's COVID-19 task force and other agencies on a lot of projects that are unfinished and I would like to see those projects finished and see the city move forward. In closing, I think I have the knowledge, background, experience and time to efficiently represent and serve the citizens of Pittsburgh and continue to move the city in a positive direction. Thank you for your time on this very important issue.
Thank you, sir. We have Mr. Boss now.
Thank you. After my wife and I were married, we decided in 2018 to purchase a home in Pittsburgh, recognizing that this is a good city to put down roots in and start a family. The city was new to me, but my wife's family has lived and worked in Pittsburgh and surrounding towns for generations. Being new to the area, I needed to get to know folks and to get to know the place. So as I walked around, meeting business owners, meeting civic leaders, meeting my neighbors, my wife and I have only seen evidence that this is a great time to have joined the Pittsburgh community. Our public school system performance is strongly above state averages. There's new investment in housing and small business, especially in our downtown. New industries are supplying new revenues. To us, all of these signs point to the prospect of growth ahead. Now, I've been so impressed with the work of what our local business owners and civic leadership have done in this regard that I've committed to opening my own small business in Pittsburgh. I'll be relocating my professional life from Boston and putting down additional business roots in our city. It's my hope that my bookshop will be part of this transformative turn towards art and culture as a source of increased economic activity, inclusion and civic pride. My motivation in throwing my hat in the ring for this city council vacancy, I want to be a part of something good. It's my desire to build on the work that's been done already to bring us to this point of possibility in supporting the mayor's office and the city departments and being an energetic and professional and thoughtful member of the city council. And above all, being responsive to resident concerns and needs. In previous leadership roles in my workplace, in volunteer work, my religious community and in my labor union, I think I've done an honorable job. In these different arenas, I always make it a priority to provide a positive example rather than just an impassioned opinion and to prioritize relationship building. I should say that if seated as a councillor at this time, it would not be my intention to run for the seat later this year. I would rather step aside and give someone else the opportunity to serve and learn in the role. I will also say that whatever the outcome of this evening's committee vote, I'm going to continue my current work of learning about the challenges and opportunities in Pittsburgh. I'm going to continue to strive to be a responsible neighbor and entrepreneur. If I can additionally serve in this short term as a member of the city council, I'd be proud to accept that role. I think we get the kind of city that we're all willing to work for. I'm willing to put in that work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our last candidate is Mr. Hughes. You just have to unmute, sir.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and to our President Zarella and Vice President Walsh, and to members of the city council. My name is Thomas Hughes. Once I made the decision to run, I've been asked two questions. One, why do I want to run for city council? And two, what are some of the changes I would like to see made in the city? The reason I'm running is simple. It's time now to get off the sidelines and get in the game. I have roots in Pittsburgh and that care deeply about our city. I'm not someone who recently moved in or someone who has no idea of the potential greatness of the city of Pittsburgh, but yet I understand its many needs. I've been a member of this community for over 30 years and have had the pleasure of working with some brave people in Pittsburgh. Teamwork is my highest desire. From serving on community and organizational boards, we have developed some of the most creative and innovative programs that have produced some of the greatest leaders in our city, some of teachers, principals, police officers, nurses, and entrepreneurs. And still, to this very day, I still have a working relationship with them. My roots run deep as an educator. I served in the Pittsburgh Public Schools as Director of Student Supplemental Services for over 20 years as a drop-off prevention and intervention specialist. During this time, I've developed a lifelong relationship with families while at the same time dragging some of their kids out of bed and getting them to school. As a former member of Pittsburgh Public Schools Education Committee, I understand it is crucial to building a strong education system for our kids. My roots run deep as a pastor in the city. I've cried with many families who have lost loved ones. Together, we have buried our fallen heroes, and together, we buried a young child because no one else was there for him. As a community partner, we have fed the hungry, clothed the poor, and advocated for our most vulnerable populations. I've sat down and had a burger and a hot dog with the homeless. I've sat in executive board meetings with the governor, the district attorney, and the mayor, but nothing gives me more joy than serving with our local leaders and members of our community. This brings me to the second question I am asked. What changes, in your opinion, need to be made? I'm not telling you that I have all the answers to Pittsburgh's problem, but I do have an answer to the question. As a minority business owner, I understand the city has done a much better job at attracting more small minority-owned businesses to the city. With that being said, I feel that it's high time for representation. We should have a voice when it comes to important decisions regarding public safety, education, and housing opportunities. It's time not to just have a seat at the table, but it's also time to have a voice at the table as well. I consider myself as a bridge builder, celebrating our great history while embracing our creative and innovative youth and young adults who are looking for a place in this city to grow, but also looking for a place they can call a forever home. We need to start thinking about the future of our city. Who is the next teacher, electrician, police officer, city council, or small business owner in Pittsburgh? What does the future demographic of Pittsburgh look like? We're losing too many brilliant, creative minds to other cities and states. We can make Pittsburgh a place that our young people do not want to leave. This is one of the reasons why I am thrilled about this opportunity to be considered for the city council. I will continue the relationship that I have developed with our police department. I've had the opportunity to work with them over the summer as a community partner on the Black Lives Matter demonstration. It was a huge success, and most importantly, peaceful. We proved that our community and law enforcement can collectively work together for the good in times of peace as well as times of unrest. Finally, I could go-
We need you to wrap up, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Finally, I could go on and on with statistics, but you all know that. I appreciate this opportunity to be considered, to be a member of your team. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you all to the candidates. I now return the meeting to President Zarella.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you to all the candidates. We will now vote to elect the councillor at large via the forms that have been sent out by the city clerk. Please fill in last names only in the boxes, and please fill in all nine names with exactly one name per box. If you rank fewer than nine names, you will be asked to resubmit your ballot. I would ask that councilors turn off their video and presumably audio while filling out ballots, just to avoid distraction. We will have five minutes to fill out ballots, but if anyone needs additional time, we can entertain that. Candidates, you may take a break for five minutes if you like, or just sit around. It's up to you. And I will announce when we are back in session once the voting has been completed. Thank you very much.
Stand by, sir.
Thank you.
You're good to resume, President.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Madam Clerk. Just to let everyone know, I have asked the city clerk to announce the results round by round so that it's clear how this process is working. We may not do it round by round in the future, but I understand that some people are a little confused on how the process works, so I'm hoping this will help. Madam Clerk, you may proceed when ready.
Thank you. I will now share my screen. In one moment, please. As you can see in the screen, with one round, Mr. Hughes takes eight votes, one for Mr. Roy and one for Mr. Mahmood. Therefore, Mr. Hughes has won and will be our new councillor at large.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Actually, that turned out to be a much less interesting process than it could have been because we had a winner in the first round. For legal purposes, we are going to have a roll call vote to confirm the result. I want to stress this is a vote to confirm that the result was correctly reached, not whether you voted in favor of the winning candidate or not. So, Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll to confirm the result of the ranked choice balloting.
Yes, of course. Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Hi.
Counselor Ben Hasenga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Bushman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you, and congratulations, councillor-elect Hughes. Madam Clerk, would you please administer the oath of office to our new councillor at large?
I would be happy to. One moment, please. Sorry, just getting everything off my screen. Mr. Hughes, if you'd kindly raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly promise and swear-
I do solemnly promise and swear-
That I will faithfully and impartially-
That I will faithfully and impartially-
And to the best of my knowledge and ability-
And to the best of my knowledge and ability-
Perform and discharge-
Perform and discharge-
All the duties incumbent upon me-
All the duties incumbent upon me-
As a councillor at large-
As a councillor at large-
For the city of Pittsburgh-
For the city of Pittsburgh-
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Speech, speech. If you would like to say a few words, you certainly may. Don't feel obligated.
First, I want to say thank you to the entire members of the council for your support, unwavering support throughout the years. It's been a pleasure to work on the sidelines with each and every one of you. I look forward to getting in the game, learning from each and every one of you. I got to tell you, it's an emotional moment for me. I'm thinking of a couple of people right now. I'm thinking of one, my mother, she passed away 10 years ago, and she just told me to do something good with my life and make an impact on other people's lives. And the second person I'm thinking of is a gentleman who just passed away a few days ago, Adrian Ford. And not just him, but a number of others. And to the individuals who also join this fight, I encourage all of us to continue fighting. The fight is not over. We have a long ways to go. The mayor has a very aggressive agenda. The city council have done miraculous things, and I'm looking forward to just being a part of the team. I'm looking forward to being a part of the team and learning along the way. So please, I'm going to be that annoying little brother who's going to ask a thousand questions. So I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all of our candidates. It was deeply encouraging to see so much interest in civic engagement. And I hope that some or all of you will consider ways in the near future to stay involved and to make your presence felt in the city. I look forward to working with the newly constituted 11-member council. I would encourage all council members to contact me with requests relative to committee assignments. I will be reaching out to you, councillor Hughes, regarding that. And also certainly contact me or any other councillor with any questions you may have. We want to make this orientation process as enjoyable as possible for you. I have a request from Mr. Kingston asking for contact information for the candidates. I believe the city clerk has that and can distribute it to anyone who sends her a request.
Thank you, Mr. President.
With the other candidate's permission, that is true.
Yes. That said, that concludes our agenda for this special meeting, and I would ask a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, you know, I'm going to ask you, Madam Clerk, to take this as a roll call vote for the benefit of councillor Hughes.
Yes, sir. With pleasure. Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Hi.
Counselor Ben Hasenga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Bushman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Dean Natale?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
And councillor Hughes?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
We are adjourned.
Good evening, everyone.
Have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.
I will talk to you all soon.